I call to order the public work session of the Portsmouth City Council. I want to welcome all of our citizens who are here today on December 10th, the most wonderful time of the year, of course. I want to thank all of those who have come to present to us today, our city staff in addition to those on the dais. Also want to thank Manager Carter, Attorney Graham Williams, and our Clerk Deborah, Ms. Deborah White and her staff, for all of the work that you've done thus far this year, and we look forward to continuing in our meeting today. With that being said, I would ask that all of my colleagues, please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of the City Council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
And now I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Carter. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Greetings, Mayor, Council, and all of the citizens who are in attendance. Thank you for being with us this evening. I have a couple items, actually three items on the agenda this evening for presentations, but we're going to switch the order of the agenda just for the first two items to accommodate one of our presenters that have another engagement or pressing issue that they have to take care of. So if you don't mind, we're going to switch those two. So first going to be up is the CXX Railroad and Transload Facility. Mr. Brian Donahue, our Economic Development Director, will tee this up and introduce the presenters for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Donahue, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Happy holidays. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening for an important economic development item that I think will be of interest to you. It is certainly one of interest to our industrial base here in the city of Portsmouth. I am really excited about the project that you'll be learning about and receiving a briefing on this evening because what it will be doing is activating a dormant rail facility and terminal within the city of Portsmouth to bring new jobs and new investment to our economy, also furthering port-centric related commerce within the city. So this evening you will be hearing from Mr. Chris DeLong, who is the President of the DeLong Company based in the state of Wisconsin. I appreciate the City Council modifying your agenda to accommodate his travel schedule this evening. The DeLong Company will be working with CSX on the conversion of an existing rail yard on Harper Avenue adjacent to Portsmouth Marine Terminal to serve as a new transloading facility to provide the movement of commodities, agricultural products through the Port of Virginia for export globally. In addition to Mr. DeLong's presence, we do have representatives from the Port of Virginia here this evening in support of the project. You may recall, just a few months ago, we were before you with another briefing on a similar project in the Port Norfolk community that the Norfolk Portsmouth Belt Line Railroad was pursuing for a transloading facility on Virginia Avenue. Pleased to report that they were very successful in their grant application to the state's Port Host Community Grant Program and received an $800,000 grant award through that program to support their project as well. So this is another opportunity that has presented itself for our community, and I'm pleased to present this to you this evening. So with that, I would like to turn the floor over to Chris DeLong of the DeLong Company for the formal presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. DeLong.
Thank you. Again, I'm Chris DeLong, President of the DeLong Company based out of Clinton, Wisconsin, and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. Here's an overview of the presentation. Just going to give you a little bit of information about our company and then tell you some information about the project and show you folks some schematics of the facility. So who are we? We're the DeLong Company. We're a family-owned business based out of the Midwest. For the last 110 years, we've been focused on the agricultural market. We do business with roughly 2,400 family farms located anywhere from New York to Pennsylvania to Iowa, all the way to California. Family-driven leadership. We have roughly 14 family members inside the business. And we have, this slide says 39 locations, but it's actually 42. We acquired a couple facilities out in New York State. And the black and white picture there is actually our hometown there. As far as giving back and supporting our communities, most of our locations are actually in very, very small rural towns. With that being said, we are located in some bigger towns now like Milwaukee and Newark, New Jersey. But the big things that we traditionally give back to the communities for are donations to food pantries and grain rescue equipment for firefighters. And we also have a charity matching program for our 550 employees. So what we do, we're a full-service agricultural company located in the Midwest. We do everything from wholesale feed products, transport, the trading of grain, selling of seed and agronomy. Our number-one business that we have is exporting via container. We've been the number-one exporter of containerized agricultural goods by container for the last 15 years. And we do roughly 88 million bushels annually, or about 125,000 TEUs. As far as the volumes that we typically ship out of these transload locations, it's generally, it's a mix between whole grains like soybeans, corn, wheat, white corn, things like that, and a fair amount of feed products that come from, byproducts from renewable biodiesel or renewable ethanol. As far as the company goes, we usually have about $1.9 to $2.5 billion in sales per year. That's really subjective, just based on the price of the commodity. A big focus of ours is sustainability. So most of our sites are actually 100% solar offset just because we believe in a greener tomorrow. The big program that we actually have for sustainability inside the company is we actually incentivize our 2,400 family farms to do growing practices that actually capture carbon. In addition to that program, the Grown Climate Smart Program, we actually pay an additional incentive for small and underserved growers, which would be smaller producers or disadvantaged growers, people in the military, people of color, and women-led organizations. As far as innovations for solutions, we've always tried to be on the cutting edge of farming practices just because that's, there has been a substantial waste in agronomy inputs that have kind of polluted some groundwater supplies. So we've really made a huge push to doing great nutrient management programs for farms and applying the right amount of fertilizer to those fields. So the reason I'm here today is to talk about our new facility we'll be building in Virginia. As far as job creation, it's going to be roughly 10 to 14 full-time employees that'll be at the facility, two to four full-time USDA-licensed grain inspectors. For any export grain, you need to have a federal grading agency there. So those folks will be there. And then 15 to 20 full-time truck drivers. Obviously, this facility will reduce inbound truck traffic. We have enough siding at the facilities to actually take in units off the CSX, so very, very efficient business model. And we actually just started taking some key components of the projects out to bid here this week. Here's a visualization of where the facility will be located. I'm sure you folks know this area better than I do, but it'll be at One Harbor Avenue. And here's another map of it. So you can see where we have the storage track for inbound rail cars, some working track for the rail cars, and then the transload facility that you can see with the black line outline. Here's some more pictures of the facility. So it'll be a mix of grain bins and some working grain bins so we can handle some different types of commodities at the facility. Generally speaking, most of our facilities will handle four different products at once, generally one or two feed products and two to three different types of whole grains and oil seeds. Again, this facility will be incredibly efficient. We've built, this will be our seventh new one in the last 15 years. So we took a lot of our learning that we've done with those other sites and applied it to this one. And as far as our timeline goes, we'll be applying for permits. We've started the process here recently, and we'll hopefully have the vast majority of the project done in August of 2025. And then as far as the investment goes, we'll be spending roughly $2.2 million on the engineering work and track, and then roughly $23 million building the actual facility, which would include concrete work for the foundation, the grain bins, the loadout systems, all the electrical components. As far as site summary, so one of the reasons I was here, besides just introducing our organization to the community, was we are going to be applying for a rail industrial access grant if we can get a letter of support from the council. Again, why it matters, we will be creating a lot of direct jobs, truck driving jobs, things like that. In addition to that, a lot of our business relies on family farms that are up the supply chain. So we'll be obviously doing business with those folks and later this year as well. The other purpose why this matters is the ability for a port to load the empty containers, to actually ship them overseas with the product, is another profit source for them and is a little bit more environmentally friendly. So why DeLong? We have a proven track record in this space. We are the largest in agricultural containers inside the U.S. And if we say we're going to do something, we do it. We have a very long-term vision for our company. And why your support is critical. So part of the RIA grant that Brian was discussing, we do need a resolution of support. And yeah, that's a little bit about our program. Thank you. Any questions at all?
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. DeLong. I do have a question. On the 10 to 14 employees that you said you'd be hiring, what will the average wages be?
Great question. Very timely, too, because we were just updating all of our wages for the fiscal year. The manager will be right around $120,000 per year with full benefits, 401K match up to 5%. The other, the employees underneath that individual, the wages will range between $2 and $26 per hour. With that being said, we have not operated in this town before. If we need to be more competitive on wages, we'll obviously do that.
And what was the, I missed that bottom scale?
22 to 26.
Okay.
But with that being said, we understand every geographic area is different. But those were the values I was actually looking over today.
Any potential for expansion or growth in the number of employees?
Great question. We really think this is going to be a very efficient business model. I would say, I hope so. And where would that growth come from? Would just be more volume and more, we would need more staff on site to help transload product.
And my last question, truck traffic. What route will the trucks be leaving town on?
Great question. I do not have the direct answer for that. I don't know if anybody from the port would have it, or Brian?
And do you, and do you have a number of truck traffic, daily truck traffic per day?
There will be some truck traffic for picking up and returning the containers. We do foresee a lot of the volume coming into this facility as far as the product we'll be transloading will be coming in via rail. But Brian can, or you can probably answer the question.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Greg Edwards. I'm Director of Sales with the Port of Virginia. I'll be brief. There's good news. The availability of empty containers to support this business is critical. The location that DeLong has chosen to locate is literally on the same geographic footprint as what we at the port refer to as the PPCY, the Penner's Point Container Yard. You all know it well. As you transit the Midtown Tunnel, coming out of the tunnel on the Portsmouth side, you're surrounded by empty containers. Those empty containers will be available to DeLong to load for export without any over-the-road movement. Now, once the containers are loaded with export product, those containers would then be delivered to one of two locations, Virginia International Gateway, right across 168 and the Western Freeway, you know that well, or to Norfolk International Terminals. So there will be truck traffic coming out of the former CSX Intermodal Ramp onto Harper. That's happening daily now, as you know. But again, loads moving to either NIT or VIG through routes that you're very familiar with.
Thank you.
And Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. DeLong. This question may be for the city manager or the city assessor, and that is, what's the tax implications revenue-wise for the city considering this is on the Port of Virginia's property?
Manager Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Sir, I don't have that information handy, but I can work with the assessor to kind of figure that out for you. We can put that in a report back if that's necessary for.
Yeah, I was just curious with the assessor, is that property that will be assessed for property tax purposes?
Mr. Edwards, if you would come forward to the microphone, please. Thank you, sir.
It should, excuse me, it should be, as long as they're under a lease, then we can tax based off of the lease with whatever they lease in the building and all that, we would be able to do.
So with what they're planning to build, has there been any estimate as far as potential property tax?
This is the first I've heard of it.
Okay.
But I'd say, based on the building and the numbers, yeah, we should assume that they do have a lease with the state or CSX, then we would be able to tax based off of that.
Just the prop, just the property, not the real estate?
Yeah, just the building, not the land itself.
All right, thank you.
It'd be a leasehold, is what they would call it.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not sure that this is a question for you. It might be for Brian or for the port. So it's good that we have more trains, fewer trucks, except it depends on the train path to get in there because we do have an issue along one of the inbound train paths into the port that with blocked rail crossings along Frederick and Portsmouth Boulevard and Victory Boulevard. I assume that it's that rail spur that ends up being used to get to Harper Avenue rather than the median of 164, but you guys are the experts. Have we looked at that?
Councilman Hugel, I don't believe we have an answer to your question. It's a great question, some valid concerns there. The service to the rail yard is through a CSX line that is existing. I do believe there is some crossover with the Belt Line Railroad as well. I can share with you that the Belt Line is currently studying opportunities for funding to support some of their crossings and improvements to mitigate some of the issues that are experienced at the local level. You know, some of these trains can get quite large, and as the exports increase through the port, we would expect that that would increase as well. So it is something that is being studied and looking for opportunities for grant funding assistance to make improvements. We can certainly report back to you with a specific plan.
Yeah, if we can get that report back on the specifics. And then to your point, there is money out there, federal and state money to solve block crossing issues. We just need to understand if this is going to create more of that for us and how we would partner with CSX and Belt Line to go after funds to solve that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeLong, for the presentation. It sounds exciting. As far as the containers, the tanks and the bins, what is the rotation of the grains or the, whatever it's going to be in there? How long and how does it get moved?
Wonderful question. So no feed products will be held longer than a period of like 24 hours. For corn, soybeans, wheat, any whole grain and oil seed, the holding period would be less than a month on average. And with that being said, grains and oil seeds can actually stay in condition for multiple years if they're stored correctly. But at a site like this, we'll be turning the bin quite often.
Okay. Well, thank you, and congratulations on 110 years. I am a family-owned business myself. In 25 years, we're proud of that, so I know you are proud as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. DeLong, thank you for the presentation and welcome to the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you. Thank you.
Manager Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. DeLong. Next presentation is from our consultants to help with our retirement process. Mr. John Morrison is going to, I guess he's going to start the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council.
Thank you.
My name is John Morrison. I am here with John Hancock. We are the retirement plan provider for the retirement systems and have been the provider for approximately 15 years now. I have a presentation here along with Brian Bernbaum from Greystone Company of Morgan Stanley. So we will give an overview of the retirement systems, and then I will talk a little bit about the annual actuarial evaluations that are performed, and then Brian will come up and give a little bit of additional information about the investments and fund performance over the past year. When we look at an executive summary of the retirement systems, we're looking at the two plans. There's the fire and police system and the supplemental system. Both of these systems have been closed for about 30 years now. So they are primarily retirees and participants that are collecting money on a monthly basis. We look at a snapshot of the system as of 9/30/2024. The funds have almost $200 million in assets. That money is invested in a separate trust held outside of city assets and held combined with John Hancock and Morgan Stanley. Over the past fiscal year, the retirement system paid around, or just over $11,000 monthly benefits for a total of over $27 million payments over the fiscal year. We'll see that's a pretty sizable number relative to the size of the retirement system, but gives you an idea of the amount of money that we're paying to the retirees currently. Over the past year, we did see an improvement in the funded status. That is largely due to a solid investment performance in the funds, double-digit returns in the funds. So that's improving the funded status. And then expenses year over year have been consistent. So I mentioned we have the two systems, fire and police and supplemental. Both of them have been frozen supplemental for almost 40 years, fire and police for about 30 years. So that means that no new members are entering the system. So as new employees are hired, they enter the Virginia Retirement System or the VRS. The supplemental systems pay benefits under three circumstances: retirement, disability, and death. There is a, the retirement board oversees the system, and they meet on a quarterly basis. John Hancock provides the ongoing administration, record-keeping, and issuing of checks, and provide quarterly updates to the retirement board. And then Morgan Stanley also provides quarterly updates to advise the system on investments for the fund and ensure prudent asset management of the assets that are currently held. When we look at an overview of the board members, the committee is made up of citizens and other individuals with ties to fire and police, individuals from city leadership, and staff also sit on these quarterly discussions. The slide here presents an overview of the funded status of the system for the past 10 years. So what we are showing here are, in the green bar, the assets that are currently held to pay the future benefits for the members of the systems. The blue bar represents the liabilities. So that is the value as of the respective valuation dates, the present value of the future payments that we expect to be paid out over the lifetime of the program. The funded status, then, is simply a ratio of the assets over the liabilities, and it's a single measure to give you an idea of how well the plan is funded relative to the liabilities in the system. We can see here that over the past three years, the funds have been, sorry, over the past two years, the steadily increasing funded status and pretty consistent around the 70%, 75% funded status over the past 10 years. I mentioned that as of 9/30/2024, there are about $200 million in assets. The funded level improved slightly from 6/30/2024 is currently around 75%. We do like to provide some sort of benchmarking to give you an idea of how the fund looks relative to other public funds. The number we're showing here, 76%, is a study from the National Association of State Retirement Administrators, NASRA for short. They release an annual study every year. This study is based on performance as of fiscal year in 2023 where the average retirement system was funded around 76%. If we were to look at your plan's funded status under a similar measure as of that date and time, the funded status would have been approximately 74%. So we see that your fund is tracking pretty consistently with the average funded status of other public funds. We perform actuarial valuation on an annual basis. So I have a few slides later on. We'll talk a little bit more in detail about that. One of the primary purposes of the actuarial valuation is to present to the city a recommended actuarial determined contribution. So there's a contribution that we are recommending that is made annually to ensure the solvency of the funds and that those future benefit payments, as promised, are, the fund is able to make those. The latest figure that we provided, so it was updated as of 6/30/2024, the recommendation for fiscal 2025 is a contribution of 8.1 million. That is down from 8.4 million last year. Last year, we would have actually projected this year to be 9.1 million. So we see a savings there, and again, that's related to the strong investment performance. So the fund earned those double-digit returns. That helps close the gap. That means less money that you would need to put in on an annual basis. I will note that this figure is separate from the payment on the pension obligation bond. So when I talk about the actuarial determined contribution, that is, does not include the payment on the pension obligation bond. For fiscal 2025, that figure is approximately $11 million. Give a little bit of an overview of the services that Greystone and John Hancock provide. And before we move on to the actuarial slides, I did want to give an update on the annual expenses. The expenses are a function, basis points of the assets held in the trust. So we see these slightly increasing from last year, but that's largely due to the fact that the asset pool itself has increased, otherwise staying consistent with what we would have projected from last year. Before I move on to the actuarial slides, just wanted to make sure, see if there are any questions or comments from the council. All right, I will charge ahead. So as I mentioned, I have a few slides on the actuarial update of the system. We start with an overview of the plan participants. Because this is a closed system, the active population is declining annually. So as these participants retire, they leave the system as active and they start collecting payments. So at this point, the system is almost entirely, as you can see here, participants that are receiving monthly benefits from the system. Those participants, we run them through our valuation system on an annual basis. Each participant, we project out a projected stream of benefit payments. Then we sum up those stream of benefit payments for all participants to determine the present value as of the valuation date. That's what that single liability figure represents. So this stream of payments that we see here over the next 40 years, and it extends the tail beyond that, those payments are discounted back to the valuation date at a rate of 7.25%, which is the expected long-term rate of return on the planned assets. That payment stream when discounted back, that is the liability figure that we're looking at when we compare the assets to the liabilities to determine the funded status of the plan. at when we compare the assets to the liabilities to determine the funded status of the plan. The next slide, we have a reconciliation of the funded status from fiscal, from June 30/2023, sorry, to June 30/2024. So we have the assets that are held in the fund, the liabilities, which again are the present value of those payment streams. The difference between the assets that are held and the liabilities represents the surplus or the deficit. So that is the shortfall funding that currently exists. That will be made up with future contributions from the city, and to the extent there are excess investment returns, that will also help to make up that shortfall. Another measure of looking at the funded status is that percentage number, the ratio of the assets over the liabilities. So at 6/30/2023, we saw the funds were about 69% funded. When we go down the liability column, the first row there is the interest costs and plan experience. So that represents primarily the expected growth in the liability. So I mentioned that payment stream is discounted back to the valuation date at 7.25%. Each year, we expect the liability to grow at that rate as those future payment streams become one year closer to being due. That number is approximately 19 million. And then on an annual basis, we reflect updated census, updated mortality tables in the valuation, and that's the main purpose of the annual valuation. This year, when we reflected those updated census, we did see a small gain, about 2%, so about 5 million in there. So the 14 million shown, the growth in the liability is about 19 million of expected growth, a small census gain, and that's where the 14 million comes from. We have the liability grows at that number, and then the benefit payments that come out, that approximately 28 million, reduces the future obligation of the plan. The 28 million equally impacts liabilities in the assets, so when we see the impact of that on the surplus or the deficit, there's no impact, net impact of those benefit payments coming out of the fund. If we shift over to the market value side, below the 28 million of payments, we see contributions from the city of 8.4 million last year. So that was the actual determined contribution that was made in full to the system for the past year, and then that investment return. So the assumed rate of return is 7.25%. Over the past year, we saw a return of about 11% to 12%. And so that is increasing the pool of assets that are held. And then lastly, the expenses come out, and that gets us to where we are at nine, I'm sorry, 6/30/2024. Asset value of 196.5 million, liabilities of about 270 million, and we see there that the funded status had improved, and I think more importantly, that deficit has decreased. So the amount of, the gap between your assets and your liabilities has shrunk, and that's what we're expecting to make up with the funding policy of the plan. One other com-
Excuse me, sir. We do have a question from Councilman Hugo. I didn't want to get too far because it might be pertinent to your discussion.
Sure.
Councilman Hugo, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I was a little slow on the uptake when you paused for questions a minute ago.
Oh, sorry.
So back on slide six, we had a blip in 2021 where our funded status was at 86% and then, and then the very next year, we dropped back down to 68%. What happened?
Really, market movement. So from 20, was it 2021, you had a very strong investment return. I recall it was about 25%. And then there was a big economic downturn from 21 to 2022, and so I think you, and as you can see, you more or less gave back all those investment returns, if you will, and that's what reduced the funded status. And then we've seen over the past two years, there have been double-digit asset investment returns, so that's starting to make up some of those losses that we have seen for 2022.
Okay, then, on slide seven, where you compute the actuarial determined contribution. So this year, it's 8.1 million. 8.1 million, when we put that into this fund, will keep us at 75%? I mean, what do you assume when you set that number?
Yep. So the current funding policy of the plan is that the, that the deficit that currently exists, I'll jump to it here, of course, it's going to take forever. So that deficit, there we go, is going to be funded. It's amortized over a 12-year period, so it's similar to a mortgage payment, where you're making payments on that over a 12-year period. The funding method uses a value of assets called the actuarial value of assets. It is a smoothed value of assets where gains and losses over the past four years are smoothed, and the primary purpose of that is really for budgeting purposes. So as you saw on that prior slide, market, the market value is going to go up and down. The purpose of the actuarial value of assets is to provide a more smoothed value. It allows for a more stable budgeting on an annual basis. Eventually, you know, as the assets move, those will work their way through the actuarial value of assets, but any one year, it will be incrementally recognized in the actuarial value of assets. So the deficit that exists is funded over 12 years. I'll skip ahead. We project that that 8 million will increase incrementally to about 9.5 million, and that's really, as we saw on that slide, those losses from 2022. As they make their way into the funding method, that's what's causing the increase in the contributions. We see that in the short term, the contributions that you're making are really maintaining the funded status of the system, and that's primarily because that the benefit payments, about 27 million, represent about 14% of the assets of the fund. At the expected rate of return of 7.25%, if you were to earn exactly 7.25%, we'd actually see negative cash flows in the system so that the assets would be shrinking annually. The goal of the current funding policy, though, is that the, we expect the liability to drop as well with those benefit payments, and so even though the assets may drop year over year, the goal of the system or the long-term expectation is that the liabilities shrink at a faster rate than the assets drop, and that's how you close the gap in that funded status. So to more directly answer your question, over the short term, we expect that funded status to stay around 75%. As we get out towards the tail end of that 12-year period, those benefit payments will start to shrink, so the contributions and investment returns become a little bit more impactful, and at the tail end of that, that's when you'll see the funded status of the system start to improve. So current, the current funding method that we show at the bottom here should drive the system, based on our long-term expectation, to 100% funded by fiscal 2037. In the short term, like I said, that'll kind of stay around that 75% we expect, but towards the tail end of that period, you'll see, we expect to see larger increases in the funded status as those benefit payments become smaller relative to the asset pool.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, the city's contribution is based on what formula?
I'm sorry?
The city's contribution is based on what formula?
Yes, so the, it consists of two parts. The first is the normal cost, so that's the accruals that your active participants are earning on an annual basis. We saw there are seven total actives, so that normal cost is more or less a rounding error in the system. The main part of the contribution is the funding of that deficit. So the deficit that currently exists is amortized over a 12-year period. The funding method that exists is that 12-year period will shift down incrementally one year. So it's currently amortized over 12 years. Next year, the increment, the existing funded status at that time will be amortized over 11 years, so on and so forth, until we get to full funding in fiscal 2037.
So that, that moves each, each year?
Yes, so we're, each year, we're shortening the amortization period of that unfunded liability to move the system closer to full funding.
Okay.
In the short term, we expect that the system will maintain its funded status, and again, towards the out year of those, that funding method is when we'll see, start to see more incremental improvements in the funded status of the plan.
Thanks.
Go ahead, sir.
I think, actually, I think that ended up covering everything I had here, so before I turn it over to Brian to discuss the investment performance, let's make sure there are no other questions.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Carter, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. It's nice to see you all again with our annual update on investment performance. I'm going to skip over, in the interest of time, some of the broad information about Greystone Consulting and its positioning within Morgan Stanley, given that you've heard that story before. But at a very high level, Greystone Consulting works with institutions like yourselves, pension funds, both in the private and public world, charities, insurance companies, and our goal is to create customized investment solutions to solve a problem that each of our clients is facing. Problem could be to fund future benefits for retirees, the problem could be to support a university. Whatever the challenge is, we create a customized investment portfolio to meet those needs. There's a third-party organization called Coalition Greenwich. They survey institutional investors who are our clients and other consulting firms' clients, ask them their opinions of the firms with which they work, and I'm happy to say that Greystone Consulting earned the Quality Leader Award, which is sort of the highest recognition of the third-party organization, but importantly, those opinions are provided by the clients with which we work. I want to talk a little bit about asset allocation and where we are in terms of how the portfolio is structured. As John talked about, the system here is a closed plan, so there isn't really new participants coming in, and outside of the contributions to close the gap from the funded status, there's no new money coming in from an active perspective. So what that tends to mean is we have a very different portfolio than what somebody who has a very active open plan might look like. When we categorize the investments that we have in the broad asset categories, about 72% of our assets are in public equities, both here in the U.S. and outside the U.S., about 20% in bonds and a little bit in alternatives. We got a little bit of real estate, we've got a little bit of hedge fund exposure there. When we compare that to the light blue bars, which is the average allocation of public funds, given that most of them are active and open, as opposed to us being closed, there is a significantly higher exposure to alternative investments, things that tie up your capital for 10, 15, some years, sometimes longer than that. Because there's new entrants coming into those systems, they have the ability to have a lot more illiquidity than we do with, as a system that is closed and frozen. And that's why you see the big difference there between the way we're invested and the way the average public fund is invested. There's a lot of research out there that tries to put these different alternative asset categories into the traditional asset class buckets, stocks and bonds. I won't bore you with the details behind how that's calculated, but there's this thing called the effective asset mix, which takes that alternatives allocation and puts it into the public market buckets. And the result of that approach is that you'll see our asset allocation is very consistent with the risk posture of the average public fund, once you kind of redistribute those alternative investment strategies. Here's a quick snapshot of the plan year performance. As John talked about, the long-term return assumption is 7.25% here. Our goal is to create a portfolio that's going to generate returns at least equal to that and hopefully better. The reality is, is there will be years where it is significantly better, there will be years where it is significantly worse, and that's all driven by what the capital markets are doing in any particular plan year and the way our assets are allocated. For the plan year ending June 24th, June 30th, 2024, I'm happy to report, this is net of fees, that our return was 12%, substantially higher than the seven and a quarter percent I look over some different periods, instead of focusing on a 12-month period ending June 30, which is the top of this table, I look at longer-term periods below the last three rows there. We started working with the city in 2016, and the return since then, net of fees is 7.8%, again, higher than the seven and a quarter percent. So when you, when you have a, an actual return that exceeds the assumption, it means the ultimate cost to the city is lower than what was anticipated. We also show here a discretionary period. Our relationship with the city has evolved over the years. We started in a, what's referred to as a non-discretionary relationship, where we would provide advice and recommendations to the board. The board would vet those ideas and ultimately say, yes, we want to do this, or no, we want to do something else, and then we would go and implement those decisions. Beginning at the end of 2018, we moved the relationship to what's referred to as a discretionary relationship. There, the board approves the investment policy statement, and it's a six or seven-page document that outlines the things that we're allowed to do, and we're, we make those decisions, we report back to the board what we've done, but we don't require the board's approval to implement those things that we believe are good ideas for the investment portfolio. Since that period, since that change to a discretionary relationship, the return has actually gotten a little bit better, 8.2% per year on average since 2018. So by all measures, you can see, whether we're talking about longer-term history and certainly the recent last two individual plan years, returned significantly in excess of the seven and a quarter percent. Councilman Hugo, you'll see here in 2022, the result is quite different. What was going on there is we had inflation at levels that we hadn't seen in 40 and 50 years. The stock market was down 20%, the bond market was down almost 15%. The worst capital market environment we've seen in, in decades, and the fact that both stocks and bonds were down historic levels made 2022 so unusual. Here's another way to look at performance. The first column here, plan year to date, so that's the 2024 plan year. We show the beginning market value, the ending market value, the money coming in and going out, and then converting the returns from a percentage to actual dollars. So you can see in the plan year 2024, the investment return of 12% translated into $21.3 million in additional dollars into the trust. Moving over to the far right-hand side, again, this is that period since the end of 2018 where we had much more discretion in the portfolio. We paid out $95 million in benefits over that period of time, and the investment earnings almost fully offset those benefit payments that we paid out. $91.5 million earned in the pension systems as a result of the, the investments and decisions that had been made. This is, I think, could be an insightful and useful way to look at performance as well. So not only do we look at performance relative to what the expectations are in terms of getting us to full funding and the assumptions that the actuary used, but we want to see if the return that we're generating is consistent with the returns of other public retirement systems. Talked about, we've got a very similar asset allocation strategy, once you make that adjustment for the alternatives than the average plan. But what you'll see here is for the plan year 2024, again, our return was 12%. It's darn near the top of the distribution of returns earned by other public retirement systems, and I jotted some, some data down here, it's not on the chart, I apologize for that. There are 699 individual plans in that universe for the plan year 2024. Our 12% return beat most of them. Okay, so gives us a sense that the, the decisions that the board is making, the strategy that's being implemented is working. We look at it over five years, ending June 30 of '24 as well, we're right at the top quartile. So what that means is our return is beating 75% of other public retirement systems around the country, from here on the East Coast all the way out to California. So with that, I'll, I'll stop. Happy to answer any questions. Yep.
Mr. Bernbaum, as always, very thorough and it's really appreciated when you explain it. I've been here certainly for a number of iterations of you all coming before us. And I always look forward to you and your team explaining things in a very easily to understand way. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Merry Christmas to you and your family.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Manager, before we go to the next presentation, can we take a quick break? I need to take care of something real quick. About three minutes. Thank you all. And Manager Carter, sure you have the floor if you would continue, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Our final presentation of the evening is from the Department of Public Health. Dr. Cavita Amrit Thomas is here with her team to give us some information and some insight on the public health of Portsmouth. Dr. Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor, City Council members and guests. Thank you for having us here today and presenting on behalf of the Portsmouth Health Department. So presenting tonight is myself and Michelle Wince, who is our epidemiologist. Michelle Wince has over 20 years of experience in public health. She is currently soon to be Dr. Wince. She's completing her doctorate in public health at the Johns Hopkins University. She has also had a master's in applied science and spatial analysis, and she also masters in public health at Emory. Her undergraduate work involved concentrations in biology and sociology. And interestingly, I wanted to say that sociology is a scientific study of human society focusing on social behaviors, interactions, and aspects of culture. Myself, I am Dr. Cavita Amrit Thomas. My background is internal medicine and infectious disease. I'm also board certified in obesity medicine. And in 2021, still wanting to get to the root cause of health and disease and how does disease manifest, led me to do a two-years integrative Western Fellowship in Medicine, Mind, Body, Environment. And I still wasn't getting the answers I was looking for, so I pursued a three-years master's degree in Ayurvedic medicine. Ayurvedic medicine is the oldest study, science of medicine, which is 3,000-year-old. And it's the study of life, and it looks at a holistic system of medicine. And looking for the gaps within current medicine, looking back to traditional medicine systems. So when I ask people, what is health? The most common definition and most common answer I get is the absence of disease. But the World Health Organization got this definition right since dating back to 1947. And the World Health defined health as a state of complete physical, mental, social well-being, and not merely the absence of disease. And you look at the chart, you see the individual, it's surrounded by mind, body, spirit. And so social health, physical health, moral health, mental health, spiritual health is all-inclusive in the definition of health for someone to be healthy. And how does health become disease? And so I just wanted to give an overview. There's some busy slides here, but really, most of us are so focused on the external environment that we're not thinking physiologically what's happening in our body. And so the five senses, you receive the input from the environment, and that gets processed in the brain, which is the master control gland of the hypothalamus pituitary axis. And that secretes different hormones, which are chemical messengers, neurotransmitters. So if you're looking at the diagram on the left, this is our brain and our regular day and activities. And then when you look at the different emotions, right, how does the different emotions affect our health? I can tell you in my practice, the most common presentation we had before a heart attack was a person was in an altercation, an outburst of anger, clutched her chest, collapsed. And, you know, I often wonder, was that a coincidence that that happened? But then after 25 years, it kept happening over and over again. And so when you look at the different emotions and different medications too, we know that antidepressants are serotonin reuptake inhibitor. It increases the serotonin level. So some of the different neurotransmitters or chemical messengers you all know about. The adrenaline, which is your fight or flight reaction, that when you're attacked by that saber-toothed tiger, you run into fight or flight mode. But, you know, the average American right now is just constantly. This is only supposed to be 6% of the time, but we are in constant stress, cortisol overload, adrenal overload. So I just wanted to give an overview about how the internal physiology is functioning as you're dealing with your day-to-day life. So what is public health? So when we're talking about public health, now we've gone to treating an individual person on one level, and we're looking now to promote and protect the health of all of the people in the community. So public health is a vast field, and it's rapidly expanding. And this diagram really doesn't even do it justice, because when we look at public health, we're looking at healthcare management. We're, you all know the environmental health, inspecting the restaurants and our citizens and pool inspections. Epidemiology that deals with all of the communicable outbreaks, as you've seen in COVID and other reportable infections by a statistics part. Behavioral science, the financial component, the emergency preparedness part, and clinical services. But a huge part is also health policies, and I'm going to touch on a couple of policies that I would like to see at least addressed in my tenure here. And so there is a new part in the Health Department called Population Health. And Avanti Allen Benson is our Population Health Manager in the Health Department. And so when you're looking at a population, how do you start? Do you start straight to the community? Or is that an effective strategy? So in the bottom of the chart, really, you, you look at the self, right? You look at the person from perinatal period to the adolescent period and then to the elderly period. But if you look at the individual, the individual is comprised of the demographics, the emotional behaviors, and also the life experiences. The next arrow up is pointing to the brain, and if you look at the brain, we talked about the neurotransmitters and also, this is genetics, right? Some of the genes that you inherit. But if you inherit a gene for cancer or for a disease, does that mean you're going to express the gene? And so there's this vast field of knowledge now on epigenetics, right? So say you inherit the gene for colon cancer, but you have two twins. And one was raised in a comfortable environment, private schools, you know, nurtured, very loving, caring environment. And you have a second twin that was in a marginalized community, abused, and sort of went through all of the other rigors of life. Do they both have the same potential of expressing that cancer gene and developing cancer? So this is where epigenetics come into, the ability to be able to suppress certain genes from being expressed based on this overall balance of mind-body exercise. And so this is also another chart, just kind of showing where we live in public health is in the social determinants of health. And so after the brain, you see then the person, personal network, which is your family, your friends, and your peers. And after that, you see that there's that community impact, where you're talking about safety, schools, and other aspects, and then goes into country and global and to cosmic. So all this to show that everything is on a cycle. Nature is on a cycle. The body's on a cycle, and the whole idea is to bring balance. And so that's a definition for population health and social determinants of health, which you always hear a lot of in the Health Department. And so does zip code affect life expectancy? I can tell you, when I practiced here in Portsmouth, all of my patients with diabetes and uncontrolled diabetes did not make it to 60 years old. And a couple of miles down the line, going to Virginia Beach, there was a huge difference in life expectancy. And this was long before the word "social determinants of health." You know, so the zip code does affect mortality. And when an individual is coming for care, they're not really understanding that all of these other compounding factors is affecting their health. I've also seen some of the worst case of asthma in Portsmouth, where we've intubated so many patients compared to other surrounding areas. And so we've long known about environmental racism and some of the superfund sites and some of the other redlining of the districts and all the other things. This is just a map that Michelle put together with areas, again, just really showing lack of green space, physical activity, income gaps, poverty. One out of five Portsmouth resident lives in poverty. Neighborhoods along the interstates and race, access to food, and health outcomes. Going back to the policy portion of public health, there's a New England Journal article showing that there are racial discrimination in clinical algorithms that doctors don't even know about. So if you're looking at a kidney function test, usually you'll see an adjustment for an African-American race, which gives a false narrative because you're not capturing the risk of the disease. And a lot of other tests have this as well. And, and, you know, this, we need to modify to remove some of these because they've been there so long that no one is familiar. But you're diagnosing disease as a later state, which is more advanced, and it leads to a poorer health outcome. So when you talk about accreditation, Portsmouth Health Department is one of four of 35 health departments that is accredited in the state of Virginia. And Mr. Carter was involved in our re-accreditation last week. Thank you for the support. And so why, why become accredited? It's because you want to show that we're responsive to the change. Without change, there's no progress. And also, you want to show that the accreditation and innovation are critical to public health to be able to transform some of these systems. This is a beautiful time in medicine. The hospitals are working in the space of community health, and we are working in the space of community health. So there is a tremendous opportunity to do some great work. When the circular chart you'll see is the 10 pillars during the accreditation that we had to accomplish. And the first part is the assessment, and Michelle is going to go through the assessment and then policy development. But really, our goal here is to give you all assurance that we are doing everything that we can to bring about health for access to all of our citizens. And you'll see at the center of this wheel is equity. Everything we do is around equity. And so our community health assessment, these are the steps that, which we've done the community health assessment. And Michelle will be presenting that to you. And these are the major plans. So the, it's called a CHA, more affectionately, the Community Health Assessment, which leads to a Community Health Improvement Plan. And we have Healthy Portsmouth doing some of that work with us. And then we're in the process of developing our strategic plan, which I hope to be able to present to you. And then quality improvement and workforce development. But if you look at the community health rankings of 2023, we see that the city of Portsmouth is 113 out of 133. And so poorer health outcomes and also lower on the health factors. So a lot of work to be done, but I'm going to give you Michelle Wince to give you the details of our assessment. And then we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Welcome, Ms. Wince.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you have the floor.
So every five years, we conduct a comprehensive community health assessment and a community health improvement plan, along with our Health Coalition, Healthy Portsmouth. You can find our most recent assessment on our website here in the red circle. We've collected the information not only for Portsmouth in this document, but also for all cities and Hampton Roads, so that you can see how our city's health compares to our neighbors. The community health assessment was a nine-month undertaking of collecting data from many different sources, including hosting focus groups in our community. Our assessment is 327 pages and includes quotes from the focus groups throughout the document, over 115 health indicators, strategies of how to address them, our community health survey, neighborhood profiles, and the community resource guide. Healthy Portsmouth voted to focus on five areas over the next five years based off of the data in this report. Those areas will be mental health, chronic disease management, substance and tobacco use, violent injuries and deaths, and prevention behaviors. The table of contents is broken down here. Our data category is focused on community information, health factors, and health status. So I'm going to very quickly go through some of the highlights of the health of Portsmouth. Starting with demographics, our focus group participants shared, I like the communities, I like the cultural setting, I like the conversations I have with community members. Another shared what is great about Portsmouth is the community. If we needed some help, we can ask the community, and they will help us out as much as they can. So looking at our population count, the population has declined since the 1990s. Thank you. But in recent years, has showed a gradual increase. Current census population estimates that there are approximately 97,000 people living in Portsmouth. This slide looks at the population change by city over time since the 1990s. The Portsmouth population grew 2.4%, which is similar in growth to what Virginia Beach saw. The cities with the biggest growth on Hampton Roads are Chesapeake and Suffolk. So looking at the Portsmouth population by race and ethnicity, 54% identify as African-American, 38% white, and 8% other. Our Hispanic population has grown to 5.3%. One thing the Health Department needs to consider is what languages we should provide health education in. We use data on what type of language is spoken at home. So 95% of individuals five and older speak English only, almost 3% Spanish, 1% Asian or Pacific Islander language, and less than 1% speak another language. So compared to Virginia, the Portsmouth population is younger, with more individuals less than 10 years of age and young adults who are 25 to 34. Versus Virginia overall has more individuals 65 and older. So throughout the report, Portsmouth is indicated by the dark blue line on the graph, so it's easy to identify and consistent with the promotional colors of the city. On-time graduation rate is defined as percentage of students who graduated in four years from high school. 84% of students graduated on time in Portsmouth. This number is slightly higher for females, 88% versus 80% for males. Our overall rate is similar to Norfolk's, but cities are significantly lower than others in Hampton Roads. Over time, graduation rates have increased since 2010, when they were under 70%. But since 2020, this trend has decreased and plateaued around 84%. And the Healthy People 2030 goal is 90%. So switching gears to social and economic factors, one focus participant said, "We need to offer programs for kids and give them a way to get rid of some energy without being on the streets. And we need to offer services for seniors and everybody in between." Between 2013 and 2023, Portsmouth generally had higher unemployment rates than the rest of Hampton Roads region and Virginia. During the COVID-19 pandemic, unemployment rates rose and peaked in Portsmouth at 9.8%. Following 2020, the rate has decreased to 3.9% as of 2022. Over the last decade, the percentage of persons living below 100% of the federal poverty level in Portsmouth remained fairly stable, ending at 17% in 2021. Portsmouth's percentage is consistently higher than other Hampton Roads city with the exception of Norfolk. In 2021, Portsmouth had the highest percentage of children living in poverty at 27%, which is significantly higher than percentages of both Virginia and the United States. Portsmouth's median household income increased almost 30% over the last decade, ending at $53,000. Portsmouth's median income is the lowest of the Hampton Roads city, and Chesapeake has the highest median income at $87,000. The figure on the right looks further into Portsmouth's median income, dividing the population based off of race and ethnicity. American Indian and Alaska Native residents had the highest median income, while African-American residents had the lowest at $43,000. One way, one of the ways to measure health is to look at mortality data. And one of our focus group participants shared, "Well, I don't like the fact that a lot of people in Portsmouth feel that nothing good can come from the city. Portsmouth is so different from everywhere else. I think that change can happen anywhere. I feel like empowerment can happen anywhere, and the biggest enemy of the people is the mindset." So looking at 2022, here are our top 10 causes of mortality in Portsmouth. Heart disease, followed by cancer, and then accidents, which do include overdoses. COVID-19 moved down to the fifth-leading cause of death in 2022, but was the third in 2021. Then there's diabetes, chronic lower respiratory disease, assault, which includes homicide, kidney, Alzheimer's, and liver disease. So taking a look at the heart disease-related deaths, we can see that Portsmouth had the highest rates on Hampton Roads, but did see a decreasing trend in 2018 and 2019. highest rates in Hampton Roads, but did see a decreasing trend in 2018 and 2019 before increasing again after the pandemic. The overall trend is decreasing for chronic lower respiratory disease, which includes both asthma and COPD deaths. Taking a look at this data, there was no significant difference between race and ethnicity or gender. Diabetes-related deaths have seen a slight decrease since 2014 to 52 deaths per 100,000, but our rates are twice that of Virginia and the United States. The rates are slightly higher for males and are two times higher for African-Americans versus white residents. The data for intentional injury deaths includes both intentional assault and intentional self-harm. Portsmouth saw a sharp increase in 2022 and had the highest rate of 60 deaths per 100,000 persons. Prior to 2020, Portsmouth rate was below Virginia's rate from 2016 to 2019. Our focus group participants said, "There's too much killing going on. It's the young people that are dying, and that's something I'm really hoping to learn, just how to find the right way to engage and make change. There's all kinds of possibility out there, but if we don't get people moving together and moving forward, things will stay the same." So firearm injuries are a serious public health problem, affecting people of all ages. Firearm injuries also impact the well-being of family, friends, neighborhoods, and communities. Death rates due to firearms started to increase in 2020. In 2022, firearm deaths in Portsmouth increased 72% from the year before. The age group that had the highest death rates is 15 to 7 years of age, followed by 18 to 19, and then 20 to 24. By race and ethnicity, firearm deaths are highest among African-Americans and in males compared to females in all age groups. From 2020 to 2022, deaths due to drug overdoses in Portsmouth increased by 99%. Data from the chief medical examiner indicates that opioids, specifically illicit fentanyl, have been the driving force behind the large increases in fatal overdoses. In 2022, 92% of all Portsmouth deaths due to substance use involve fentanyl. Portsmouth has the fourth-highest mortality and emergency department visits in Virginia due to overdoses, but there are disparities as to who is affected. Overdosed deaths are highest in males and those over 55 years of age. Of the eight zip codes in Portsmouth, one zip code, 23704, accounts for 39% of drug overdose emergency department visits. In good news, last year, we saw the first decrease in overdose deaths, with 20 fewer deaths than the year before here in Portsmouth. So as we look at data by zip codes and census tract, we can see that place matters and help. Research has shown that differences in neighborhood conditions powerfully predict who is healthy, who is sick, and who lives longer. This map shows life expectancy by selected census tracts in Portsmouth. Babies born just a few miles apart can have dramatic differences in life expectancy. Here in Portsmouth, that can range from 64 years to 81. If you live in Churchland, you can expect to live an average of 80 years. In downtown 75, over by the shipyard 66, and Hodges Manor 77, and West Payden Park has the lowest life expectancy of 64 years old. So we have two neighborhoods, only a few miles apart, where life expectancy differs by 17 years. We draw attention to the disparity, not to say don't live in this neighborhood, but instead, we want to raise awareness of the factors that shape health and spur discussion and action on the factors that influence health. These factors are social determinants of health that include education, economic stability, neighborhood and the built environment such as parks and recreation, health and healthcare access, social and our community context, which is feeling like belonging, ownership, as well as our social networks, norms, and trustworthiness. So for example, let's take a look at those two census tracts and the social-economic factors that can influence health within them. For the census tract that had a life expectancy of 81 years, residents have significantly higher median household income, $63,000 compared to $39,000, lower numbers of families who live in poverty, 13% compared to 27, a higher high school graduation rate, 87% versus 72%, and more people with a bachelor's degree, slightly lower unemployment rates, and slightly lower number of rentered occupied housing. If you look at these rates compared to Virginia as a whole, you see that not only do we have disparities within Portsmouth, but we have disparities compared to other areas of the state. So we've realized how important it is to have local data at the sub-city level, but this data is often not available for our smaller city from national or statewide survey data. So as a Health Department, we have decided to invest resources into collecting our own local data. So we've conducted a community-wide health survey in 2013, 14, 17, 21, and most recently of September this year. And we go out in neighborhoods and we knock on doors. We use a CDC methodology and tool so that we can be sure that the data we collect is accurate and reliable. So using a two-step process, 35 areas are randomly selected from the census blocks in Portsmouth. And then within each of those census blocks, seven households are randomly chosen. So it's a double random sampling method. We go out in person, knock on doors, and complete the survey in one week. And this is the map of the areas that we sampled this year. This is an example of the maps that our field teams receive and instructions on how to sample houses in a cluster. Teams are instructed to start at the smiley face and continue in the direction of the arrow. To know how many houses to go to, the team would divide the total houses, in this case, 34 by 7, and they know to knock on every fourth house. The teams would repeat this as needed until seven interviews are completed in the cluster. Overall, our teams completed 204 surveys this year. A one-page front-and-back survey tool was developed and captured information on 90 questions. Questions were determined in collaboration with our community partners and included information on demographics, general health status, chronic conditions, access to care, and health behaviors. The majority of questions are standardized from other national surveys. So anytime we use survey data to represent the whole city's population, we look at the demographics of our survey respondents versus the entire city of Portsmouth. We want to make sure that our sample is representative of our population. Our percentages of female and male participants match the cities. For race, white respondents were slightly overrepresented, while black respondents were evenly represented. One limitation of the survey is the respondent does need to speak English, so that can limit responses from residents for whom English is not their primary language. For age groups, those aged 20 to 59 were evenly represented, while those 60 and older were slightly overrepresented. The education of our respondents had a slightly higher education attainment of college graduates. So diving into the results, 23% of our residents said that they would consider their health fair or poor, compared to 18% of Virginia residents. This was an increase since our last survey in 2021. On the right side of the slide is a map where we have estimated where general health is fair or poor in Portsmouth. Those areas in the darker blue colors reported higher instances of poor health. We asked residents what being healthier meant for them, and for most, it meant that they had energy, can move without pain, and be in good mental health. 41% of Portsmouth residents reported being obese, compared to 34% of Virginia residents. A nearly quarter of our residents reported not getting enough exercise, which is similar to that of Virginia. And this was a significant improvement from 2021, when half of our residents reported not getting exercise. Tobacco use is slightly higher, 23% compared to 11% of Virginia. Residents who have high blood pressure are higher here in Portsmouth than in Virginia, while high blood cholesterol is lower than Virginia's. 7% of residents reported being diagnosed with cancer. 12% of Portsmouth residents have asthma, which is similar to Virginia's. Looking at diabetes, 15% of Portsmouth residents said that they had been diagnosed with diabetes, which is similar to Virginia's 12%. Additionally, another 20% of individuals reported they were diagnosed with prediabetes. So mental health is important to living a healthy lifestyle. 20% of the residents said that they would consider their mental health to be fair or poor, which is an increase from previous years. The map on the right shows darker shaded areas where more residents reported poor health. 37% of those surveyed said that they had days in the past week where they had little interest in doing things. A similar number, 30%, said they had felt down, depressed, or hopeless. And nearly a quarter of residents surveyed reporting feelings of loneliness. So taking a look at healthy eating behaviors and food access, 63% said that they do not eat a serving of fruit every day. A similar percentage, 61%, reported not eating any vegetables. The map on the right shows lighter shades as areas where vegetable consumption is lower. 65% said that they consume sugary drinks. And when we asked about access to food, 26% reported that they were worried about food running out before they had money to buy more. So neighborhood safety is critical, so that the people feel safe in their homes and their sidewalks and for their kids to play outside. 10% of residents reported feeling unsafe in their neighborhood, and 21% reported that violence in their neighborhood had increased in the past three years. The map on the right shows the darker shaded areas as areas of perceived increases in violence in their neighborhoods. The COVID-19 pandemic has left an impact on our community. We asked residents how it affected them both in 2021 and this year. And with the exception of income, residents are reporting better access to food, increased physical activity, and better access to healthcare than they did in 2021. The map on the right shows areas where Portsmouth residents reported being obese, based off of questions about height and weight, which is defined as a BMI greater than 30. The full report of the 2021 Community Health Survey is available on our website, and the 2024 report will be available by the end of the month. These reports are full of great charts, maps, and graphs, and our goal is to offer data in ways that are meaningful, useful, and easy to understand. We have maps that use spatial analysis to estimate all the responses across areas that were not sampled, and we've also developed neighborhood profiles by census tract that combine that health status data, health behavior data, along with those social, economic, and physical factors which define health. When looking at access to healthcare, one individual said that there are not enough doctors in Portsmouth, from what I understand. They have no room for you, and it's just, isn't just geriatrics, this is all the way around. So taking a look at our primary care providers, a community needs approximately 70 to 80 physicians per 100,000 population to have sufficient care. However, Portsmouth only had 56 primary care providers per 100,000 in 2022. When compared to surrounding city, Portsmouth had the third-lowest rate of primary care providers. On the other hand, Portsmouth had the highest rate of dentists in Hampton Roads at 139 per 100,000 persons. The rate of dentists in Portsmouth has increased 56% since 2013. The Healthy People 2030 goal is for 92% of people to have health insurance. In 2021, 93% of people aged 0 to 64 had health insurance in Portsmouth, and this trend has increased in all Hampton Roads cities from 2017 to 2021. One participant said of the physical environment, "I think a really healthy community has a good mix of providers, a good mix of food sources, a good mix of recreation sources, and probably a good mix of religious sources." Food insecurity is linked to negative health outcomes, and it may cause children to have trouble in school. The figure on the left looks at the Food Environment Index, which takes into account the percentage of the population that is both low-income and does not live close to a grocery store, and estimates the percentage of the population that did not have access to a reliable source of food during the past year. The population in Portsmouth, who are food insecure, has been decreasing since 2014, with 11% of the population being food insecure in 2022. The figure on the right shows that while food insecurity is decreasing, limited access to food, to healthy food, is increasing. From 2014 to 2022, Portsmouth saw a 73% increase in people with limited access to healthy foods, which is about the middle of the Hampton Roads area. Here is another example of disparities that exist within our city. Limited access to healthy and affordable food can make it harder for residents to eat a healthier diet. The areas highlighted are where a significant number of people experience both low income and low access to the nearest grocery store. Almost 44,000 people live in these areas, roughly half that of the population of the city. In this map, we overlaid residents who have diabetes with those who live in food deserts. Areas that are identified as food deserts also have a higher percentage of individuals who are diagnosed with diabetes. So during our focus groups, many participants, including our youth participants, talked about community safety. One participant said, "No child should be accustomed to hearing gunshots at night, not an infant, not a two-year-old, not a 22-year-old, not an 82-year-old, but it's happening everywhere." From 2013 to 2017, drug and narcotic arrest rates increased, but more recently, from 2017 to 2022, there's been a reduction in the rate of arrests. As of 2022, Portsmouth rate still remains the highest of Hampton Roads city. There's been an increase in the rate of DUI arrests in Portsmouth from 21 per 100,000 residents in 2013 to 159 in 2022. Looking at domestic aggravated assault over time, there's been an increase from 2013 to 2022, which Norfolk experienced as well. There's been a substantial decrease, 34%, in the rate of abuse, neglect, referrals for Portsmouth. And this trend is consistent throughout Hampton Roads. "For quality of life means to me being physically able to do the things I want to do, being spiritually connected, being healthy, being able to communicate, being able to collaborate, and enjoy the things I love doing," one focus group member said. So tobacco use, which is associated with multiple poor health risks, is among the most important modifiable risk factor. Though there has been a decrease in smoking since 2013, Portsmouth's percentage of adult smoking is still higher than all other cities in the region and in Virginia. In Portsmouth, nearly 30% of adults reported no leisure-time physical activity in 2021. For maternal and child health, one participant said, "I think what makes a community healthy is trust, having proper resources, having a great religious community setting, and having a good structure for children." When looking at public school kindergarten students, the percentage of immunization rates has decreased from 98% in the fall of 2013 to 92% in the fall of 2020 in Portsmouth. However, it is important to note that that drop-off could be due to the pandemic and students partaking in online school in the fall of 2020. The Portsmouth teen pregnancy rate has decreased overall since 2013. The age group of 18- to 19-year-olds in Portsmouth had the highest rate, followed by 15- to 17-year-olds, and then less than 15-year-olds. In 2020, the teen pregnancy rate for those who identify as race as other were highest, followed by African-American than white residents. This graph highlights the rate of mothers who receive 10 or more prenatal visits during their pregnancy, and this rate has been improving. Healthy People 2030's goal for infant mortality is five deaths per 1,000 live births. Portsmouth rate continues to be high at 12 deaths per 1,000 live births and is the second-highest in our region after Franklin City. Breaking it down by race, there are significant differences between races, with African-Americans have a rate 40% higher than white residents. Looking at cancer, Portsmouth had both the highest incidence or number of new cases and deaths in recent years of all surrounding cities. In good news, Portsmouth's total cancer mortality rates have decreased 10% in the last decade. Excluding skin cancer, breast cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer among women. It is about 30% of all new female cancers each year. In 2015 to 2019, Portsmouth had an incident rate of 130 per 100,000 females, which was the third-lowest rate in the Hampton Roads area. In contrast, from 2016 to 2020, the city had a mortality rate of 26 per 100,000 females, which is the highest mortality rate in Hampton Roads. New cervical cases of cancer have been trending downward in Portsmouth, decreasing 33% from 2009 to 2019. Portsmouth had the second-lowest rate in 2019. And then lung cancer is the second-most common cancer in both men and women in the United States. And in the Hampton Roads area, Portsmouth has the second-highest rate of new cases and the highest mortality rate. So that wraps up our lightning round on community health data, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Thomas.
So we wanted to bring you the facts, and we also wanted to bring you all the various approaches and the resources. So showing this interconnectivity, you start with self and self-first, and a group of self-improving in how we improve the community altogether. But individual, interpersonal, institutional, community, and policy. And also, the interconnection, the resilience, the partnership, the hope. And investing in public health is not only a moral imperative, but also an economically sound strategy. And evidence shows that reduced healthcare costs enhance work productivity and stimulate local environment. We cannot do this work alone. I cannot do this work without my team. My team cannot do this work with all of us coming together and showing this interconnection. Everything is physics, the laws of physics. For every action, there's a reaction. And when you're looking at, going down to the quantum level in terms of physiology, we talked about anger, we talked about emotions, and how do we bring balance? Balance after a prolonged period of time becomes disease. And how many of us has gone to a doctor and you know that you have something that's hurting or wrong, and you're not finding anything on the test, right? It doesn't mean that you didn't have anything. It means that you know yourself best, and the tests are only designed once a disease has manifest. So we're really taking a deeper approach into not just patch system of medications. Obviously, we're doing the standard of care and medicine. Obviously, we're doing the standard of care and medicine, but we're also looking holistically at everything and how a disease manifests, and how to curtail that manifest, and how to capture diseases early, and how to control it, and how to decrease some of these health outcomes. And so ironically, Michelle and I, we put the dandelion. And a dandelion, actually, it's a representation of resilience, perseverance, hope, and wishes. You know, a dandelion seed can travel up to five miles, and there's about 5,000 seeds. It's also a medicinal herb, and it was not native to North America, it was brought here. It's a potent antidiuretic, and it's a diuretic, sorry. And you know, it represents happiness, joy, and where there's dandelion present, there's hope and transformation and renewal and spiritual enlightenment as well. And so we're really looking forward to 2025, being here and working together with everyone. And thank you for your support, we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, and Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Thomas and Ms. Wince. The question becomes, being that this is a legislative branch, what are the policy recommendations at the local level that the state is recommending to address these inequities that you've presented?
So I think there's tons, I think the...
So I, I think that the answer is probably not simple, like we can't list just a couple. But, and in a community like ours where we have so many health challenges, we need to look at every aspect of our community in order to create the healthiest environment we can for individuals to thrive. So from looking at how we can increase food access, whether that's bringing in different types of food, grocery stores, whether that's looking at, you know, parks, trees, neighborhoods. So it's kind of taking that holistic approach to not only addressing healthcare access with healthcare providers and social services, but also our environment.
So many of the different health conditions were related to poverty. And so there are no recommendations coming down from the state as far as at the local levels of addressing the issue of poverty.
So for, so for poverty, we can look at...
Could you come a little closer to the microphone, please?
For poverty, we can look at education attainment, looking at diversity of jobs that youth can go to afterwards, peer networks. So there are actually strategies, and they're within that community health assessment to address poverty as well.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, Dr. Thomas and Ms. Wince for the presentation. I think this is something that we've all kind of known, you know, just in the backs of our mind, but to see it on paper kind of breathes life into it, and I'm happy to have it, but I think that more people need to have this information. So I was wondering about the partnerships that may be out there, our housing departments, and also maybe our social services to be able to get some of this information to the residents here. I like the comparisons across the other cities, I hate that we're in the status that we are, but I think that, you know, the more people that have this information, the better we are to come out of it. My question or my comments were similar to Dr. Whitaker's with the policy and with our legislators in the Virginia General Assembly and those in federal levels. Are we able to have them to hear this information and maybe provide funding that could help with the education and just the awareness for our residents here?
Yes, yes, and yes. The community health assessment, we have had the health director's advisory, and we are involved with social service, and we've been able to link greater representation from the hospital systems as well. So we've shared it, it's also on the website. If you have any other ways of us presenting it, we're happy to come out and present it as well. In terms of, yeah, I'm new to government, so I'm...
You're doing a good job, good job.
Yeah, I'm trying to come out of the help and just kind of see what's available in funding and status. Community health workers, recently, we've been funded two community health workers. You know, the great thing about the team is that we're really boots on the ground and really connected to the community from all the things that I've, so, and we're really working on that interconnection with the community driving and not kind of dictating with all of the data and everything else.
Right. I think some good partnerships would be to attend those lobby days at the Virginia General Assembly and get in the hands of some of the health and education committees so that they can have that information. I think the more ears and eyes we have at those broader levels, the better we will be here at this local level. But I thank you, I've never seen this type of presentation come from our health department, and I thank you and your team for all of the work that you put into sharing this information with us.
Thank you for your support, yes. I just came back from the Medical Society of Virginia Physician Leadership Conference, and definitely brought up the history of the lung function testing and the kidney function tests and all of that that gets racially adjusted. A lot of the health systems are starting to drop that system, and so I reached out to Bonsecor and Centerra as well to try to see what we could do, but I definitely need legislative support to be able to change some of that.
Okay, I think we can help you with that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. And Mrs. Shanti, I saw where you came forward, was there something, madam, that you wanted to add to the conversation perhaps?
Yes, and thank you for allowing me to speak. In regards to policy, the General Assembly in 2024 has allocated money for different districts with community health workers to address maternity mortality. Beginning of the year, hopefully, we'll have that funding funneled down to the Portsmouth Health Department. I'm always of the mindset, if we can start with the babies, then we have a fighting chance. If the babies are healthy, then by the time they go to school, they'll be healthy, they'll have a better learning environment, so we can start there. So we're looking for some good things as a result of this grant, so we can address the maternal mortality issues, the fact that moms have to go to other cities to get services. So hopefully, we can, we're able to bring in some services to help those mothers. So that is one of the policies that the state has addressed, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
100%. And it's my understanding that Bonsecor is putting in a maternal clinic in our city. We can talk more about that a little later, but it's my understanding that something like that is underway.
The maternity ward is still there, they don't have any physicians attached.
Correct.
They are building a imaging center so that women will not have to leave Portsmouth to get a mammogram.
Correct.
That's been lacking for the last nine years. Women have had to go to Chesapeake, Norfolk, Suffolk to get a more mammogram, when Portsmouth had one of the highest mortality rates in the country.
That's correct.
So we've gone down from number one to number 11, which is a plus. It took about 10 years, but it can be done.
Thank you, looking forward to continued progress. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Thomas and your team for this presentation. It was a lot of information. Once again, I think it's information that the city has known for a long time. Portsmouth is a sixth city, and it's been a sixth city for quite some time. But I want to thank you and your team for helping to really dig deep into, helping to find out what the issues are. And as you all worked to develop this strategic plan based off of this assessment, you know, I think it's really important that the city walk alongside you through this process because a lot of this is not, not everything takes state and federal policy changes. A lot, looking at a lot of this, a lot, probably about 75% of this, the city can help address. When we look at the food deserts, the access to food, that's economic development. When we're looking at green space, that's our parking racks. You know, that is something that the city can take lead on. Looking at your presentation, there was a graphic that had the roadmap on it and the different factors that helped to contribute to, well, that's kind of contributed to where we are now, but you know, also addressing how we can fix those things. A lot of those things are things that we've seen in other presentations. We had a presentation from Dr. Newbie Alexander in regards to brownfield sites and environmental justice, and she had made mention, you know, communities that are along your interstate walls, well, excuse me, along interstates that don't have walls, those are some of your communities that experience high health disparities. So these are things that we know, and you know, it's things that it's time that we kind of take action on addressing. And so I'm really looking forward as we go into 2025, addressing these things, and as I may mention, 75% of this we can do without assistance, well, we always need assistance from the state and federal, but without having to go to them, begging them for additional help, we just need to really take charge on this. It was really disheartening to see the life expectancy differences across the city. I mean, you're looking at 16-year difference between somebody living in Churchland and somebody living in the West Haven Park neighborhood. You know, that goes back to, again, city council investing in our citizens, investing in our neighborhoods. It doesn't take state and federal policy, it takes us taking an initiative to invest and really take a holistic approach to addressing healthcare disparity. Looking at our, the diseases that are running rapid in the city, heart-related diabetes, just not having access to food leading to cancer, intentional injury deaths, I mean, that shows mental health is definitely on the rise. Overdose, 39% being just in one zip code. It's very heartbreaking, it's things that, like I said, we've known, but it's time that we really take action on this. So I just thank you for your leadership, and I just, you know, really charge our city council to walk alongside you, and really let's, if we're going to address the betterment of people, let's do that. And so thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah. You know, there's no lack of, in all my years of practice, there's no lack of shame, guilt, or self-doubt, and I think just changing the narrative in terms of treating patients in Portsmouth, you know, I've always thought the quieter the patient, the deeper the wound. And now, like, we didn't really ask questions about social determinants of health, right? And so this whole language, this whole time, you know, I think this is a lot of hope, and the space, I think, post-pandemic, people are looking for more integration and whole care, and yeah, so, a lot of work to do, but very hopeful.
Councilman Hugel, so you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, thanks, Dr. Emmett Thomas, for your very thorough report. Lots of data here that provide factual insight to what our instincts have been. Kind of following up on Dr. Whitaker's question, you know, what next? The CHIP report that you provided to us has a 2024 Community Health Improvement Plan. Whose plan is that? Who's implementing that plan? And what help might you need from us to see that plan through?
Yeah, so Healthy Portsmouth, we've just brought back the coalition together, but I think we need some help in terms of re-establishing the board of Healthy Portsmouth. They're the ones really driving the CHIP improvement plan. But I think obviously, funding is important there. Usually, it was driven by EVMS, but now I think we have more representative from Bonsecor's locally as well. So I think definitely some support in terms of re-establishing that board to drive that CHIP process.
And is that, so who owns that board? Who do they work for?
It's our nonprofit, but I don't know the details of it.
Okay.
Yes, the Healthy Portsmouth Coalition was established under the former mayor Kenny Wright, and through the years, the board has dissolved. A couple of the board members have resigned, retired, moved to other localities, so we're down to one board member who is acting chair. So you really don't have a board if you have one person. So we need to re-establish the board, but there are several factors that are involved with that. We're going to need legal assistance because we need an executive director, someone to handle the payroll taxes, and that's something that's out of the hands of the health department. That's out of our scope. We are an arm, we work together, and the coalition members, there are about 22 active members from different sectors, Eastern Virginia Medical School, Bonsecor's, we have representation, Centerra, so we have key partners, we just need leadership. And the health department cannot be a leader.
Right, and if I could add to that, I was contacted this week by Dr. Keith Newby.
Yes.
Dr. Newby and I have agreed that it is something that we need to reconstitute the Healthy Portsmouth Board. That's something that we are going to discuss as a council moving into the new year. We have had conversations about bringing that back as well. So we understand what is needed in terms of the leadership in order to put that in place, and as we have our discussions with council, we will discuss all the parameters and how to put that back in place. Dr. Newby has agreed, if you don't know who Dr. Keith Newby is, he's a cardiologist, he has a relationship with Bonsecor's, he's been a cardiologist for a long time in this region, and Dr. Mark East, who is a cardiologist here in the city of Portsmouth, who lives in the city of Portsmouth. They're very much interested in how that they can engage in order to turn some of these health outcomes that we're experiencing in the city of Portsmouth around. So that's the conversation that we need to have, and we will move forward.
And this report refers to the Portsmouth Community Health Advisory Council, is that the same thing, or is that something different?
No. The health department, through our accreditation with the Public Health Accreditation Board, we're required to have an advisory council. We have about 12 members. We have representatives from the city of Portsmouth, we have, our president is from Bonsecor's, Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing, we have faith-based representation, we have social services, behavioral health, we have a citizen who's not affiliated with any other organization who's on the board as well.
And is that council involved in implementing this plan?
No.
No, we're not.
They review our strategic plan and make suggestions. They listen to our concerns that we have to see how they can pull their, and leverage their relationships to assist us with those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, ma'am, for...
Yeah, City Attorney Levonda Graham Williams, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, just to follow, thank you, ma'am, for that. I just want to follow up with Councilman Hugel's question, and the, the board that you mentioned that former mayor Wright developed, that started as a city board, but developed into much more of a private board, and so you probably need to work backwards from the private sector and then see how we as a, as a council can support that, because it's already outside the realm of our, our place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, Dr. Emmett Thomas, I just wanted to, there was a question, a comment I had. You, you talked about the impact of constant stress, you mentioned that earlier. As we look at the issue of crime, not only the gun violence, but crime that deals in other areas and also in other states, what is it from the public health perspective that this issue of stress is causing on brain development and behavior of our children?
Yeah, so I think post-COVID, coping mechanisms and skills and the different generations, the intergenerations, and how different people deal with stress. But I put the diagram there because to get health, I can't tell you what to do, but if I want to change your behavior, and if I'm, if I say, you know, do you want to lose what, you need to lose weight, it decreases your chances of cancer, da-da-da-da, and I give you all those things as a physician versus... versus if I come to you and say, how important is losing weight to you on a scale of 1 to 10? You tell me a 5. Then I say, well, why isn't it a 2 or a 3? So you're doing the change talk and behavior, if that makes sense. So a lot of it is behavioral, and a lot of it is how we act by example. A lot of it is how we treat each other in terms of respect, dignity, non-bias, non-stigma. So that's how, when we're talking about self, you know, the vagus nerve, the parasympathetic innovation is the counter to stress. Stress is fight or flight, adrenal, high cortisol, everything is on a cycle. And so by decreasing that stress, you can decrease blood pressure, decrease. We know that when you have these bursts of anger and rage, so everything is trying, we have these spikes and emotions, and everything is sort of bringing us back to self and going within rather than reactivity. Post-COVID, I think it's just such, it was a time to be by yourself and for the lessons to be learned to get to the next level of evolution, wherever you are in that. And a lot of people could not handle or deal with it.
And I was, the reason I was asking that because when you start talking about the high levels of poverty and you look at homelessness and transient populations that are experiencing, that those things create stress, food deficits. I think as we look at the crime, I was just curious, what is public health recommending and saying as far as on those things? So when I mentioned earlier about policy coming down from the state, that's because I believe, and you all are agents of the state. You're not part of the local. So that's why I was curious as to...
Yeah, I don't think we have a specific approach, as in many of these things. And it's kind of, yeah, seeing what grants are available and seeing that the grants have a very defined space. And it doesn't allow, like even maternal mortality, for example, you have to look at the chronic disease, right? Because, again, in the hospital, I've seen the most cases of cardiomyopathy and people going into heart failure, shock, and death after delivery, right? So is that grant going to help us address hypertension, prediabetes, and all of this stuff before that epigenetics kind of piece? So the state is still trying to figure out what is the best approach. I think going deep into the knowledge of medicine and the physiology is sort of what I'm trying to bring forward to make it all an integrated, interconnected approach. But I don't have an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. That concludes the presentation that was prepared for you this evening. I'm turning the meeting back over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Are there any liaison reports at this time? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the Crime and Gun Violence Reduction Task Force had their second meeting a couple of weeks ago, Monday before last, I guess. I want to make sure everyone knows that the next meeting of that task force is January the 6th, Monday night, 6:00 p.m. here on the sixth floor of City Hall in the City Council Conference Room. The group at this last meeting spent time kind of getting their feet under themselves. They're organized now. Importantly, one of the standing committees that is included in their bylaws is a data and metrics committee. And so given that health and healthcare and well-being is a contributor to poverty, and interestingly, the heat maps that you all showed in your assessment for where we have health issues overlay with the same neighborhoods where we have high crime incidents. And so there may be opportunity for us to connect and share data and also for them to draw out your ideas on how to address some of these health issues as they pertain specifically into those neighborhoods where crime and gun violence is occurring often. That's it, sir, thanks.
Thank you very much. And so that concludes our work session for today. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to add to Councilman Hugel's comments in regards to the Crime Commission. We also have the subcommittees, and we are encouraging people to participate in those subcommittees. You do not have to be a member of the actual task force to be a member of the committee. So if you are watching this, we encourage you to please reach out to our Crime Commission or to the Clerk's Office to find out how you can get involved in serving on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, that concludes our public work session. We will adjourn the meeting, and we will reconvene our regularly scheduled council meeting at 7:05. Thank you.